Welcome to the City Council Regular Meeting this Monday evening, March 3. I now call the meeting to order. Would all please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
City Clerk, would you please call roll?
Certainly Mayor Newsom. Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Here.
Councilmember Svirko Guditsky is absent and excused due to a pre-planned work-related business travel. Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Here.
And Mayor Newsom?
Here. We are excited to be here in person with options for those who choose not to be in person to participate virtually. There are several ways to participate. For those attending in person, please complete a yellow request to slip, request to speak slip and hand it to the clerk. If participating remotely, use the raise your hand feature in Zoom and you will be called on at the appropriate time. If calling in via phone, press star nine to raise your hand and when called upon, press star six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for each specific item. Tonight, we have a few ceremonial items to start off. The first ceremonial item is the Mayor's Quarterly Hero Award. And coming up for this will be Maxine Turner. This evening, we take a moment to recognize someone whose dedication and service to San Mateo has had a lasting impact. It is my honor to present this posthumous, 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 sorry, I've only practiced this three times and I'm still, Mayor's Hero Award to Keith Weber, who is represented tonight by his wife, Maxine Turner. Keith is a, was a lifelong resident of our city, whose advocacy and leadership helped shape our, the community that we cherish today. Keith Weber passed away on January 21st, 2025, at the age of 76. He was not only a devoted husband, father and grandfather, but also a tireless advocate for responsible city planning, community engagement and neighborhood preservation. A native of Cranford, New Jersey, Keith made his way to the Bay Area after attending Northeastern University and completing his education at St. Mary's College in Moraga. Here in San Mateo, he found his passion for service and making a difference. As the Director of Construction Services at the John Stewart Company for over 30 years, Keith played critical role in ensuring high-quality affordable housing was available to thousands of Californians. But beyond his professional contributions, Keith worked timelessly to ensure San Mateo's growth was thoughtful, inclusive and reflective of the community values. Furthermore, Keith tirelessly advocated for the north central neighborhood of San Mateo. Former Mayor Claire Mack still speaks highly of what Keith, along with his wife Maxine, did for that community. Keith recognized that his area, that the area needed a voice and he and his wife worked with a core group of concerned neighbors to form the Home Association of North Central San Mateo. This group continues to serve the community to this day. Keith continued to partner with his wife and together they were catalysts for creating the Third Avenue 101 Pedestrian Bike Overpass, a project that took persistence, but one that ultimately has improved connectivity for the entire city and community. Keith's impact went beyond policy. He was dedicated to ensuring San Mateo remained a place where people felt a sense of belonging. He worked to protect our historic district. He led walking tours to educate the community and advocated for the responsible stewardship of neighborhoods. It's one thing to say you love your city, but Keith lived in it every day and he did so for many decades. He poured his heart into San Mateo to protect what makes it special. Many may not have known his name and that was by design. He worked humbly behind the scenes with unwavering commitment. Even in his final year of life, he remained dedicated to the city as though he had made a promise he would never break. Keith's contributions to San Mateo are immeasurable, touching every corner of our city from housing and development to infrastructure and civic engagement. And for those of us who knew him, we will never forget him. On behalf of the City of San Mateo, we are, we'd like to extend our deepest appreciation to Keith's lifelong service. It's with great respect that we recognize him with this month, this quarter's Mayor's Hero Recipient Award. Oh, sorry, say that out of order. And we thank Keith and Maxine for their united unwavering dedication to our community. Maxine, before I come down and bring the award, there's some people that would like to also make comment. So we're going to do this a little out of order. I'm going to ask you to step over just a little bit and I'm going to let people who want to make comments come up and they can speak directly to you and us.
Lisa Van de Vordt. Followed by Tom Lees and Diane Whittaker.
Good evening, City Council and Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity to speak and thank you so much for honoring Keith Weber with the Mayor's Quarterly Hero Award. It means so much, not to just his wife Maxine, but to all of us in the community who knew and admired Keith for his tireless efforts on behalf of San Mateo. For myself, Keith was a mentor and a friend. I'd like to add my own proclamation of sorts, one that would extend this Quarterly Hero Award to a more permanent recognition of Keith by the City of San Mateo. So here we go. Whereas Keith Weber's passion was historic preservation for which he left a significant legacy in San Mateo, whereas Keith Weber's advocacy helped create the downtown historic district, which is eligible for listing on the National Register of Historic Places. Whereas Keith served on the State Board of the California Preservation Foundation, which awarded the City of San Mateo the Preservation Design Award for the historic rehabilitation of the St. Matthew's Hotel into affordable rental housing. Whereas Keith Weber, as a founding member of the San Mateo Heritage Alliance, developed and led historic walking tours to showcase the architecture, history and value of San Mateo's authentic downtown. For all this and more, I hereby request that the City of San Mateo install a sidewalk plaque or perhaps a bench as a permanent memorial in recognition of Keith Weber's significant contributions to and impact on our city. An ideal location might be the Plaza in front of the Century Theater where the downtown walking tours start and for which I have the honor and distinct pleasure of continuing to lead and that from here on out will always be dedicated to the memory of our San Mateo hero, Keith Weber. Thank you very much for your consideration and I look forward to working with the city to make it happen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Tom Lees, followed by Diane Whittaker.
Whereas, that was really awesome. I had the good fortune to volunteer for Heritage Alliance at the Yoshiko Yamanuchi House last summer, as well as downtown, as well as a downtown historic tour. I was so impressed and excited by these events that I somehow ended up on the San Mateo Heritage Alliance Board. At my first meeting, they were talking about historic guidelines, history of baywood architecture, glaze and wood contributors, and I didn't know what any of this was. And I said, I'm not, I don't think I'm qualified to be on this board. I was then told that Keith was, I'm getting chills. I was then told that Keith was happy that I was on this board and I felt such a deep honor and it was a really powerful confirmation and it means even more so now that I know more about Keith. Can I? I'm still new to the historic community, but my passion for historical sites was born by my mother and father. Our vacations were 70% historical sites, missions, ghost towns, Jack Lennon House, et cetera. So though I did not know Keith very well, I love him and Maxine. And I would like to honor Keith and Maxine the best I can by doing the best to honor Action Six, Action CD 58 Historical Preservation Ordinance. I just want to ask, please, in honor of Keith, I was going to read these, but we all know them, to honor Action CD 58, CD 59, CD 510, 11 and 12 of our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Diane Whittaker, followed by Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom, Deputy Mayor Lorraine and esteemed council members. I first crossed paths with Keith Weber in June of 1991 in the conference room across the hall, Room C. It was a panel discussion sponsored by the San Mateo County Chapter of the American Institute of Architects on the topic of the Measured Growth Initiative. The panelists included Barbara Kautz, then Community Development Director, James Chalmers, Chair of Concerned Citizens for San Mateo's Future, Jack Matthews, Vice President of the San Mateo County Chapter of the American Institute of Architects, Keith Weber, San Mateans for Responsive Government, and Susan Cohen, also from San Mateans for Responsive Two years later, in May of 1993, I actually moved to San Mateo and into the north central neighborhood. I later learned that Keith and Maxine had also owned a home in the north central neighborhood. For the last 32 years, if asked, I can confidently state that the two individuals I most associate with their love and commitment to the betterment of the City of San Mateo and the north central neighborhood are Keith Weber and of course Claire Mack. Thank you, Maxine and family, for sharing Keith with the community for so many years.
Thank you. And final speaker in chambers will be Lori Watanuki.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and members of the City Council. My name is Lori Watanuki and I am so glad that Keith Weber is receiving this special recognition this evening. I was very fortunate to meet Keith and Maxine about 35 years ago on was very fortunate to meet Keith and Maxine about 35 years ago on the Third Avenue Interchange Project. And I met him through the Environmental Impact Report and the Environmental Assessment Report because their comments were just unbelievable and so thorough and knowledgeable. What I remember about Keith Weber was his vast knowledge of historic preservation, the creation of the downtown historic district, his walking tours, and the movement of the downtown transit center further north to First Avenue. Keith was such an amazing individual and so deserving of this special Heroes Award this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Our final, final speaker in this item will be Seema Patel. Seema, please unmute your mic.
Good evening, City Council. Thank you again for the opportunity to comment tonight. I currently serve on the Planning Commission, but I am speaking on my own behalf. I, like the others, wanted to acknowledge the huge impact that Keith Weber had on the City of San Mateo. He had such a great eye for design and architecture and I always appreciated the comments that he submitted on projects. It was clear that he spent a lot of time and a lot of effort to thoroughly research the projects he commented on and provide really thoughtful feedback that really helped improve the projects that came before San Mateo. I hope that all of the thoughtful feedback that he provided on the objective design standards that actually made it in will be one other way that his legacy will live on in San Mateo. So I just really wanted to acknowledge the loss of his passing and express my condolences to his family. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Jordan Grimes.
Good evening, Council Honorable Mayor. I just wanted to share, Keith is someone with whom I had no shortage of political disagreements. But he was a truly impactful San Matean. He truly loved this city in a way that not many people do. And his impact will be felt for generations to come, regardless of whether or not I disagreed with him on a range of political matters. He was an important figure in San Mateo. May his memory be a blessing. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
All right, Maxine, you're up.
Not much left to say. That was truly meaningful and beautiful. And thank you to everybody who spoke and especially to you, Mayor Newsom, for awarding this Community Hero Award. It's been hard, losing my partner of 49 years. So this honor means a lot to me and I know it would have to Keith too. As has been said, Keith's proudest accomplishment was the creation of the downtown historic district along parts of B Street and Third Avenue. These architecturally unique and historic buildings would not have continued to exist without their protection. He was truly grateful for the continuing support of you, the City Council, for including the downtown historic district in the new general plan. Keith was also a great believer in Margaret Mead's words, to never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. So it comforted him greatly during the last year to see a new generation of preservation advocates continue to recognize the value of San Mateo's authentic downtown to both old and new residents. Everyone should sign up for one of these downtown walking tours to learn more about this asset, which is unique to San Mateo. I sincerely thank you again, Mayor Newsom and councilors, for this honor. It is much appreciated. Thank you.
Moving along to ceremonial item number two, Women's History Month Proclamation. We'll have a presentation from Trish Erwin, PhD, the Commissioner of the San Mateo County Commission on the Status of Women and the Clinic Manager for Fair Oaks Health Center and Sequoia Teen Wellness Center. There's to read? Hold on one sec. Before we do. Sorry. Oh, it's the present. Oh geez. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
I'm like, it's right in front of my face. Okay, we have a proclamation. I'll read it and then we'll let you speak. Whereas, Women's History Month celebrates the contributions women have made to the United States and recognizes the achievements of women over the course of American history in a variety of fields. And whereas, this year's theme, set by the National Women's History Alliance, is Moving Forward Together: Women Educating and Inspiring Generations. In celebration of the collective strength and influence of women who have dedicated their lives to education, mentorship and leadership. And whereas, from classrooms to boardrooms and from grassroots movements to global initiatives, women educators and leaders have played a pivotal role in nurturing minds and inspiring transformative action. And whereas, women across all cultures serve in roles that are central to the advancement of society. And Women's History Month is a time to reaffirm our commitment to achieving gender equality, reflect on progress made towards resolving workforce disparities, and recognize that much remains to be done to improve the status of women and girls. And whereas, societies where women are given opportunities for equal participation are stronger. And in order to achieve peace, security and full respect for human rights, women must never be denied a voice. And now, therefore, I, Robert Newsom Jr., the Mayor of the City of San Mateo, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim this month, March 2025, as Women's History Month, dated March 3, 2025.
Thank you. That is an awesome proclamation. I loved all the parts of that. So, good evening, Mayor Newsom and Honorable City Council Members. My name is Trish Erwin. I'm a Commissioner on the Commission on the Status of Women for the San Mateo County. And I'm also a very proud member of San Mateo. I live right up from Belmonteau down the street. So, the Commission on the Status of Women is a nonpartisan advisory board to the San Mateo County Board of Supervisors. We engage the community and we provide recommendations and leadership in developing recommendations that address the needs of our girls, our women and our families within San Mateo County. The Commission on the Status of Women was founded in 1984 by Jackie Spear, who has rejoined us on our board. So we're very excited for that. So on behalf of the Commission, I'm really excited to accept the San Mateo Proclamation on March as Women's History Month. I'd like to say just a little bit about what the Commission has been working on recently. A lot of it's very exciting. And just also acknowledge for the first time in our county's history, we've got a majority women County Board of Supervisors now. So with the three women and supervisors can and the coast. So, and also on this board, I understand it's also majority women. So just to go along with your proclamation, I really, it's just nice to see. So, we and the Commission have been proud to work on, we've worked for the last two years on a report called Fund Our Future or Fund the Future. And we released it last fall as part of a conference that we held. And we found that there are two major sources of economic barriers to women within the county. And one is the wealth gap for women, and that includes disproportionately low-wage jobs and careers, career interruptions, whether it's childcare giving or elder caregiving, and then lack of financial literacy sort of in general. This was done through a lot of interviews and focus groups, et cetera, that we did throughout the county. And then as well as a lack of access to affordable childcare, which is something that we're all very familiar with. We're also happy as a commission to come out and to talk more about our recommendations and what we, what we found. So if there's any interest in that for your staff or for any folks in the community, we're happy to do that. In general, what we propose, we propose six recommendations to the Board of Supervisors that were accepted by the board. And one of the key things they did was to establish a full-time, permanent position within the county to address the countywide issues that affect women and children and to adopt a action plan for women and children. So very excited to have that new position, you know, given, given everything that's happening. I think it's even more important today to have kind of this focus on how we can uplift women and girls within our community. So I want to thank you again for the opportunity to accept the proclamation and share what the Commission is doing to support the women in San Mateo County. So thank you so much. Appreciate it.
And Trish, before I come down, I think a couple council members, at least one council member wanted to speak.
Absolutely.
Thank you so much for being here and thank you so much to Tanya Beat, who is the director for the CSW and a number of other commissioners, commissions in San Mateo County. I just wanted to, again, highlight, I love that March is Women's History Month, but really, we've, women contribute a lot. So every month should be Women's Month, quite frankly. And I'm really proud to be part of a council that has a majority women, I think for the first time in 20 years, since about 1998, when I think Councilman John Lee was, was the only male on the council. And then we went to majority men and now we're swung back. And I think that gives us a real opportunity for looking at things in a new way in leadership. And I'm just really proud to serve with Councilmember Diaz Nash and Councilmember Swikor Guditsky, who is down under in Australia. But I celebrate with all of us tonight.
And I would also like to congratulate the Commission and congratulate our community. And I love the fact that March is Women's History Month because it is an action verb. It is not about just, you know, sort of, it is, we are marching and we are marching forward and we are marching forward together. So I love the, moving forward together is the theme and there is so much to be done. So I would love to actually read the report and maybe sit down and talk with you afterwards about what can be done.
Yeah.
Because reports are great, but only if they don't sit on a shelf.
This is a living document. We're committed to making this a living document, to be able to take it. And we have two working groups right now looking at kind of the wealth gap, the pay equity piece, and then how do we communicate this more out to our communities and doing some listening sessions throughout the county and some other work that we're going to do. But absolutely, would love to sit down.
And I'd also recommend that you reach out to the high schools and the middle schools and teachers, elementary schools, right? I mean, I know in my district, Aragon High School, I'm interviewed every other week by one of the newspaper reporters there and they're always really focused on key topics. So this would be something that I think would be really important to get out to everyone.
Yeah, absolutely. We have two youth commissioners that are on our, on our board as well. And then I believe the state, and look at Tanya to help me with this, believes just passed a law to actually require financial literacy in all high school classes now. So I think that will go a long way. I certainly could have used it.
And that is something that everybody needs. That is a gender neutral need.
Absolutely, absolutely. Right. We'll really, really appreciate this acknowledgement. You're the first that we know of, right? We've got the Board of Supervisors, I think, next week or this week. So I really appreciate you guys giving us this proclamation.
Okay.
Okay.
I'm going to come down, but I will say that in my household, every day is Women's History. I am a father of two young women and also have both my mother and mother-in-law as widows. And so I feel like I am definitely, definitely observing Women's History Month every day of my life. And anything I can do to empower my, my mom, my, my wife, my daughters and mother-in-law, I'm happy to do. So thank you so much for coming and come down and present. If you guys want to come with me.
This is Eileen, actually. She's also on our commission.
Thank you so much. All right. That concludes the ceremonial part of tonight's meeting. Let's move on to our consent calendar. Mr. Clerk, could you please read the consent calendar?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. All matters listed under the consent calendar are considered by the council to be routine and will be enacted by one motion without discussion. If discussion is desired, that item may be removed and considered separately. Item number three, City Council Meeting Minutes Approval. Item number four, Enforcement Citation Authority Ordinance Adoption. Item number five, Official Visit to Sister City Toyanoaka, Japan Approval. Item number six, San Mateo County Home Consortium Agreement Amendment. Item number seven, Emergency Services Council Joint Powers Agreement Amendments Approval. Item number eight, Annual Sewer Basin Rehabilitation On-Call Professional Design Services Amendments. And finally, item number nine, San Mateo City Employees Association Side Letter of Agreement Regarding Salary Equity Adjustments Approval.
Okay. Is there any member of the council who would like to pull an item from the consent calendar? Seeing none. Are there any members of the public who wish to comment on any consent calendar item? Now would be the time to make your comment. This is for consent calendar items only. Mr. Clerk, are there any requests for speak?
No requests received in chambers. If you are participating remotely and wish to speak on any of the items on the consent calendar, please raise your hand. No. Mayor Newsom, there are no requests to speak on the consent calendar.
Okay. Is there a motion from the council to approve the consent calendar?
So moved.
I'll second.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
And Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Right. Moving along. Public comment. Next on the agenda is public comment. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the City Council at this time. State law prevents council from taking actions on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to for staff for follow-up. This public comment section is generally limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, that is subject to the council's discretion and can be extended if the council wishes to do so. If needed, an opportunity for additional public comment may be also provided later in the agenda. Mr. Clerk, could you please tally the total number of requests to speak on general public comment?
Certainly, Mayor Newsom. We have in chambers a total of 10 requests to speak. In our virtual environment, if you wish to speak on this in general public comment, items not on the agenda, please raise your hand. No. Mayor Newsom, that is 10 requests to speak. So per council adopted rules and procedures, that'll be three minutes per speaker.
Okay.
So if I call your name, and we'll start with our speakers in chambers first. When I call your name, if you could please line up to my right, that we greatly appreciate it. Our first three speakers will be Christina Herlitz, followed by Michael Lynn and Laura Wood.
Council Mayor, I'm here today to speak yet again on the proposed
Council Mayor, I'm here today to speak yet again on the proposed bus depot that has for now been put on hold. But that's not enough. There's an ordinance 2008-10 regulating against vehicles over five ton to drive on Kehoe Avenue. There is also a second ordinance 2013-8 restricting large oversized vehicles to park in residential neighborhoods. I'm asking the council to not give an exemption to the school district regarding these ordinance, but rather to work with the school district to find a more suitable space for the buses, preferably in a non-residential neighborhood. I'm very concerned that in case of an emergency were to happen while the 35-plus buses are en route, which by the way, is four times a day, first responders will not have a, will now have a very difficult, if not impossible time to get to the destination in a timely manner. It's equally worrisome to imagine a natural disaster that requires an immediate evacuation while these buses are clogging up Kehoe and other surrounding streets. There would be nowhere to get out of the neighborhood. This kind of an unfortunate event could possibly lead to a death trap for hundreds of residents. We will not give up this project until it's been moved to another location. It should not be that hard for the city of San Mateo, Foster City, and the school board to come together and find a spot in a non-residential area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Michael Lynn, followed by Laura Wood and Zuda Bowers. Zaid, thank you.
Good evening. I'm Michael Lynn, representing the Shoreview Parkside Neighborhood Association. We want to thank the council and city employees on their efforts in researching background contracts and ordinances pertaining to the proposed bus depot behind Bayside Academy, as well as dialoguing with the San Mateo Foster City School District. We are hoping that this ill-conceived project gets tabled by the board, but we need as many roadblocks put in the way as possible before the board finally gets the message. We understand and acknowledge that the city wants to keep a congenial relationship with its sister governmental entity, the school board. But we also implore you to use every tool that you have to help the school board make a more practical decision. After all, you have taken on the sacred job of representing the citizens of this city. You are our voice. Please continue to be so. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Laura Wood, followed by Zaida Bowers and Vikash.
I strongly object to a diesel or electric bus depot parked in any residential neighborhood in San Mateo. I live in Parkside. I just don't think this is suitable. I'm deeply concerned about the risk of a spontaneous fire with these lithium batteries and the size of the fleet. Just recently, there was a lithium battery fire in Monterey, California. Scientists are now discovering high amounts of heavy metals in the soil and water, which is an ecological disaster, which I'm not sure how they will ever fix this in Alcorn Slough. The Bayside School District sits adjacent to a creek in the lagoon that feeds into the bay. This site also has a heron rookery and many shorebirds that are part of the Pacific flyway migration. It is also adjacent to many residences and three schools. If there is a fire, what are you going to do to remediate this high levels of metals? In January 2025, four electric school buses were involved in a fire while charging in a depot in Massachusetts. This school district has since shuttered all of these buses. In recent years, there's been several incidences in Canada. In October of last year, nine Taiwanese buses started on fire in their depot. These fires are extremely hard to put out due to the batteries' location at the top of the buses and the rapid thermal spread. This type of technology needs special fire training, maintenance, and an industrial site, not a residential site. Thank you for all your efforts to work with the school board to find an appropriate safe site. And this Saturday is International Women's Day. There's marches across the nation. Check it out. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next three speakers will be Zaida Bowers, followed by Vikash and Michael Reagan.
Good evening, esteemed city council members and visitors. Yeah, thanks. Thank you. My name is Zaida Bowers. I have resided in the Shoreview Neighborhood since December of 1994. I am here tonight to share what happened to me on May 29, 2024, along with other times I have walked on or near Norfolk Avenue. At approximately 3:10 PM on May 29 of last year, I was walking northbound on Norfolk Avenue by Smart and Final, not the main entrance, but just close to it, when a truck hit me. The driver of the truck was trying to turn right in front of me onto South Norfolk. The driver of the truck failed to look both ways for pedestrians before making his right turn and accelerated at a high speed to avoid oncoming traffic. I was hit by the truck so hard that I was thrown onto the street of oncoming traffic and landed flat on my back. As a result of the impact, I suffered a hematoma, ringing in my ears, insomnia, excruciating migraines, migraine headaches. And my short-term memory has been pretty bad, even to this day. My livelihood has been greatly affected. I also went through a period of disorientation for approximately eight months, and I am not the same person I was before the May accident. Even to this day, I find it hard to function when participating in day-to-day activities for long periods of time. While the May accident has been one of the most traumatic ones I have ever experienced, it is not the only time I've been hit by a car while walking on Norfolk Avenue and Fashion Island Boulevard. There have been at least three other times I recall when I have walked through a crosswalk. Drivers roll onto the crosswalk and fail to look for me in it. Hence, I have been bumped and bruised by cars when trying to cross the street. While I consider myself to be lucky to be alive after being hit by cars, others have not been as lucky. There have been three recent pedestrian deaths in our neighborhood, and I still remember one death that occurred in downtown San Mateo one summer while a pedestrian was crossing the street as a driver was making a right turn. Some individuals might say that it is the pedestrian's fault for not making themselves visible. But I ask you, how much more visible can a pedestrian be during the daytime?
Thank you, Zaida.
Thank you.
Our next three speakers will be Vikash, followed by Michael Reagan and Jennifer Pachlović.
Honorable Mayor, Deputy Mayor and City Council members, I want to speak on behalf of, in opposition of Bayside Bus Depot. First and foremost, I want to thank the city attorney and the city manager for all the work you've done behind the scenes in getting this to be stopped, which is very important. But along with a public update so that we can have our community members breathe the free air, we also need a removal from the school board website, because that makes people feel really uneasy. Given that they have been operating in the shadows in the background without any transparency, it makes us nervous to see that this is still posted on their website. And then we need a notice from them saying that they've terminated the project. That's very important for the mental well-being of our community, knowing that we won't have these buses zooming 160 times a day and spewing diesel fuel until they're all electrified, of which a portion of them still won't be electrified because the manufacturers don't make big buses with batteries yet. One thing I want to talk about that I mentioned before is that there were signs on Kehoe prohibiting vehicles exceeding five tons. I would like to kindly request Department of Public Works to restore those signs, not just for vehicles traveling up and down Kehoe, but also for parking in those areas, because it's not zoned for it. And there used to be signs when I was growing up in those neighborhoods. And so I would really appreciate if somebody can work with Mr. Matt Faubry to hopefully restore those signs. We used to have at least three of them up and down Kehoe. With that, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Michael Reagan, followed by Jennifer Pachlović and Trina Pierce.
Just wanted to state, you know, as far as Keith is go, rest in peace. We could really use an incredible, his incredible insight and knowledge with so many changes that are coming to San Mateo. I'm here to speak. I am the current president of the Bearsford Hillsdale Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to discuss the Hillsdale Mall Development Plan that has been submitted to your planning department. As I mentioned at the Blue Sky meeting, we have put together a group of San Mateo citizens that have grave concerns about the scope and size of this development and the long-term negative ramifications that will result if this project is approved. Both financial and everyday burdens on those living near and traveling through our city will be affected. All of you sitting up there supported Measure T, that eliminated our height and density, that Measure Y provided our community. Those key elements are why, I believe, retaining why would have made this project a far better development than this monstrosity that now is in front of us. So the trust we have bestowed upon you, our city council, to assure that the citizens of San Mateo will in good faith protect our best interests is unfortunately missing. And it's a shame, because three of you up there this evening campaigned on re-establishing the trust of your community that was lost by so many of your previous council members. I'll give you one fact about this project as of now. It will add, not subtract, to the number of housing units we are expected to develop in the state housing mandate because of the amount of commercial office space that this project is asking for. I can't in good faith tell my Bearsford Hillsdale Neighborhood Association members and residents that you, our city council, will protect our community if you let this project, as submitted, proceed. I'm asking that you or our city council include us in future decisions. I'm hoping that our goal is a development that we all can be proud of, as something that invigorates and enhances our city, not just rewards those who will profit with little regard to the people who will endure every day the many complications that this project is asking us to accept. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker will be Jennifer Pachlović, followed by Trina Pierce.
Good evening. Multiple people attended your meeting on February 8 and the school board's meeting on February 28 to protest the school board's plan to locate a bus depot at Bayside. Many others have sent emails. While I was happy to see that the school board updated their website to indicate that this project has been postponed and that the district is actively reviewing various lease options, I want to emphasize that my neighbors and I will not be satisfied until Bayside is entirely eliminated from the school board's list of viable sites. Both the school board and city council have heard from their constituents that this location is not suitable. It will compromise the health, safety, and well-being of all the communities in and around Bayside Academy. I am asking San Mateo's city council to continue to represent and advocate for us by upholding city ordinances and zoning regulations that were put into place for a reason. Additionally, a reminder, the city has a lease for portions of the Joinville Park property for the benefit of all the people of San Mateo. Please, please do not allow any exemptions or waivers. Thank you.
Thank you. And our final speaker will be Trina Pierce.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and the remaining council members. I would like to ask the city help on some of the residents of North Central, a nonprofit organization who house adults with mental and other disabilities. Most of these residents are scared to come forward and just did not believe they had any recourse since the bike lane had been placed. Some of them have disabilities. They have it on their cars, the plaque, and now the blue is gone. And that's just not right. Actually, I did try to fight for some of them. I sent letters, and I was just getting nowhere. And then one of the, a couple of the families told me, stop, Trina, we're not going to beg for that. They give it to the other districts. We have the doctor's excuse, and it's on our cars. We're not going to beg for it. We'll just put in pavers. But everybody can't put in pavers, so some didn't get the pavers. I just asked that they be given to listen to them and don't belittle them and don't act like they're asking for something that they shouldn't have. Some of them just, they don't want their names mentioned, so I'm here fighting for them again. And then when I found out about the nonprofit organization, they were willing for me to help them and let them know who they were. So I think at least if they come forward, I think you should at least give them the blue, and it's going to be bright in the bike lane. But, you know, you can't take that away from them if they illegally got that from their doctors and stuff. So I'm just asking that they be listened to and not belittled, be belittled. And, you know, a lot of people in our neighborhood are just scared to come to the city. And, you know, I say they're not going to do anything, but I'm the last person that can say that, okay, because we already know what happened. So I just ask that you listen to them. If I need to step in, I will step in for them again. But I did try. There was a guy that was helping us that worked for the city. He came out to one of the houses, took pictures. But he told me he was leaving the job after we worked for a little while. So I called the office, and they said, well, he doesn't work here anymore. And I go, I worked for 30 years. When we leave a job, the documents stay there, the pictures stay there. But no one was willing to help me, and the families were just getting fed up. So I just asked that, please listen to them when they come. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Thank you. Mr. City Clerk, could we report out a little of what we heard at our meeting with the San Mateo Foster City School District? Sorry, Mr. City Manager, I'm looking at City Manager.
No problem. So I believe it was on, was it on, I believe it was on Thursday, we had the two-by-two meeting, both Councilmember Fernandez and Mayor Newsom, and not myself, met with the superintendent of the San Mateo Foster City School District. I don't know if they're the chair or vice chair board, or maybe just board member, they're both board members?
Board members.
Okay, Maggie, Trin, and, okay, got it. And then Gene, Kim. And during that discussion, we discussed the bus depot. And both the mayor and Councilmember Fernandez made it very clear, and myself made it very clear, that should a bus depot want to locate over at the Bayside Academy site, they'd first need to talk to the city about the current lease that we have for the next 15 years on the location of where the bus depot would go. And then two is that they need to follow all local zoning codes for a bus depot as well. They indicated during that meeting that they are looking at alternative sites throughout the city. And I let them know as well that should they find an alternative site, please come and meet with city staff. We're happy to support and help and make sure that they find the right zoning for locating the bus depot. So that's where we left off on at this time. I can't, you know, we aren't the school district. The school district will do it, make the decisions they have to make, but we're here to be collaborative partners, but just make sure that all laws and agreements are met. That's kind of what I heard from the council.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Okay. All right. Well, then, we can, we close the public comment section, and we'll move on to our next agenda item, old business. Item number 10, Central Park Playground Improvement Projects Appropriation and Award of Contract. We'll have a present- have a presentation from King Leong, Project Manager, and Joanne McGreeney, Park and Recs Director. Welcome.
I might just start off by acknowledging a few people that have worked very hard on this highly anticipated project. I would like to thank City Attorney's Office, specifically Assistant City Attorney Ling Nguyen, the Deputy City Clerk Sean Tell Eaton, and our friends at Public Works and the CIP project team that have helped support us on this large project. It was a robust packet for this evening, so just wanted to let everybody know it's a team effort within the city, and we just really appreciate everybody's support. And so I will turn it over to King for the presentation. Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and members of City Council. My name is King Leong, and I am a senior project manager in the Parks and Recreation Department. Thank you for the opportunity to present the update for the Central Park Playground Improvements Project. Can we forward the next slide, please? Our efforts to reach today's project milestone has taken a number of years, starting in 2014, when we hired RRM Design Group to facilitate a master planning process to renovate Central Park. The planning process included many community workshops and focus groups to envision the future for Central Park and develop suitable master planning options. These designs were refined by input received from the community and distilled down to the community's preferred alternatives. In 2017, the preferred alternatives underwent thorough environmental impact review by our environmental consultant, First Carbon Solutions. First Carbon Solutions prepared an initial study, mitigated negative declaration report, and delivered the administrative final report in January of 2018. In the same year, the project reached its first major milestone when the city adopted the final master plan for Central Park, which was a major achievement for the city and the community. After the master plan adoption, the design team, RRM, shifted their focus on implementing Phase One, which mainly consisted of the Fallen Heroes Memorial and the playground renovation. From 2019 to 2021, RRM engaged the community through a series of workshops and surveys to develop a series of conceptual playground design alternatives. The community ultimately selected a playground design concept with an adventure village playground theme. From 2022 to 2024, RRM developed the final design of the adventure village playground, and with the city's approval, moved on to prepare construction documents for planning, application review, and approval for a building permit. In the fall of 2024, another project milestone was achieved when the project went out to bid. On September 6, 2024, sealed bids were opened, but unfortunately, all bids came in over budget. On October 7, 2024, City Council adopted Resolution Number 91, rejecting all bids, and authorized staff to negotiate a lower contract price with the low bidder, Suarez and Munoz Construction. Over the several months, staff worked closely with RRM and Suarez and Munoz and value engineered the project to reduce the initial bid of $11.5 million to $8.5 million. Cost reductions were thoughtfully executed to maintain the original adventure village design integrity. Over the next series of slides, we will show the efforts made to value engineer the project. This is the conceptual image of the original Adventure Village's five-to-12-year-old play area, illustrating the proposed woodland-themed play structures surrounded by a forest of mature trees. Here, the original site plan design is shown. The pink shaded area was where we focused our value engineering efforts. This area includes the two-to-five-year-old play area, the restroom, and a large trellis and seating feature under the Bunya Bunya tree. Staff would like to point out that within the pink shaded area, there are two unique heritage trees, a Morton Bay fig tree and the Bunya Bunya tree. Each tree has their attributes as well as their shortcomings. The Morton Bay fig tree will require substantial park maintenance staff time and effort to keep the play area clean and safe. On the left side here, the blue shaded area represents the original play area proposed for the two-to-five-year-olds, including the Morton Bay fig tree. On the right side, the blue shaded area represents the new location of the two-to-five-year-old play area. Many of the play elements and features were retained in the new location of the park. This change, eliminating proposed improvements within the pink shaded area, reduced the overall construction area and cost of the project. In the original design shown in the left image, the restroom building is within the pink shaded area. On the right, the restroom building was moved out of the pink shaded area in order to reduce the project's overall construction area. On the left, in the five-to-12-year-old play area, a play structure circled in red was placed on an elevated platform. On the right, the play structure was lowered to the ground, removing the elevated platform, reduced the construction cost, and opened up the play The original restroom building on the left was a pre-engineered building and intended to be built on-site. The new turnkey restroom building on the right will be prefabricated in Nevada and shipped to the site, ready to be craned into place, where the utilities will be quickly hooked up. The original picnic shelter on the left had a more elaborate roof design and embellished support columns. The new picnic shelter on the right has a simple hip roof and standard steel support columns, which reduced costs and simplified maintenance requirements. Throughout the value engineering process, staff, the designers, and contractor worked together to maintain the project's original design integrity and to maintain Central Park's standing as a regional flagship destination park. In addition to awarding the construction contract tonight, staff is bringing forward a donation from Parks and Recreation Foundation in honor of the retirement of former director Sheila Kansian in the amount of $10,000 to support this project. Our next steps: tonight's action to award the construction contract, the groundbreaking ceremony, and to begin construction. Recommendation before council tonight is to adopt a resolution accepting the $10,000 donation and to award a construction contract to Suarez and Munoz Construction, Inc. Staff is here to answer any questions. Thank you, Mayor Newsom, Deputy Mayor Lorraine, Councilmembers Diaz Nash, Councilmember Spriko Goditski, and Councilmember Fernandez, wherever you are. Thank you.
Thank you, King. We'll now open up this topic for public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to make public comment, Mr. Clerk?
Mayor Newsom, I have not received any requests to speak on this item from individuals in chamber, and no request to speak in our virtual environment either, so.
Okay, then we will close public comment and open it up to questions, comments, and motion from the council. Does anyone want to start? All right, Councilmember Diaz Nash. Thank you.
Thank you very much, King, and Joanne, and the entire team for the past 10 years. And I'm looking at Sheila Kansian with a special thank you, because you have really lived this from the very beginning to where it is today. And I'm actually surprised you didn't come up and say something in public comment, but I'm hoping that means that you're supportive of what's going on here. I think this was a real great effort by a cross-functional team to maintain, as you said, the design integrity and the intention that all the parents and children who contributed to this playground had in designing it this way, while still realizing that we have to live within our means, and we have to make budget trade-offs. And I think these are very wise budget trade-offs. I would also imagine, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that this might speed up the construction of the playground project, because you're prefabbing certain things, you're taking away other things. Is that a fair assumption?
It helps eliminate more complicated construction efforts with the restroom construction.
Okay, great. And I am very supportive of this. The one thing I would suggest to staff is that there is, and I'm sure it's within the plans, a lot of early outbound community conversation, because there, as we've heard in the past, there are lots of people who've been coming to City Hall for years and years and years, and you've been trying to fulfill their needs and what they want. And now that, I hope we move forward with this tonight, but if, if we do, then we really need to get out and tell people so that they can get invested in the project and not just wait till the end to say, here we are, but really celebrate all along the way. So thank you. Thank you very much.
King, Joanne, thank you so much for all the hard work that you have done. And I'm, obviously, I'm a new council member, so I'm new to this whole process. My question with regard, and I appreciate the modifications that have been made in an effort to make these more financially feasible for the city, is there anything or any consideration with regards to play structures and like accessibility for people, children with disabilities, or different learning for that? Like, kind of like there, we have like the magical playground sort of concept, which is very expensive. But do we have anything there that we've integrated into, into that plan?
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, there are all-inclusive playgrounds, and there are more inclusive playgrounds. So we have incorporated inclusive elements into this playground, and accessibility has been considered with the boardwalk and different elements. So both tactile, so, you know, sound, there's all kinds of sensory play features as well. So it would not be considered an all-inclusive playground, but there are definitely inclusive elements.
Wonderful. Thank you. And just congratulations to Sheila Kansian on this donation in her name.
Thank you, Senator Mayor, and thank you, Lady Manager Leong, for your presentation. Could we say a little more about the changes to sort of like the fencing or barrier area, and particularly near the two-to-five-year youth area, as it looks like it's gotten closer to El Camino Real? And I know the last time we talked about this, we talked a bit about having sort of like a, some sort of, you know, wall fence barrier to help ensure that we didn't have runners and, and the anxiety that goes with parents and whatnot. And how, how are we used, how are we looking at that, especially with how we've moved the, the two-to-five area?
Thank you for that question. When we shifted the two-to-five-year-old play area from the upper area, the pink area, down closer to the southwest corner, we made sure that the two-to-five-year-old play area is enclosed by fencing. To, we, we heard council's request to make sure that we had fencing to catch the runners, so to speak. And RRM, the designers and staff, made sure to keep that feature intact.
I'd just like to also mention that there's historic fencing along the park as well to separate from, from El Camino. So with two other entrance points, but just wanted to point that out as well.
Thank you. And I just remember, I believe that was, you know, one of the, one of the items that we were looking to reduce cost on. So was some of the, I think I saw in the report, it said something of like a reduction in fencing. Can we maybe, can you, I don't know if we have a visual, or can you help us understand what, what has generally changed with it?
With the relocation of the play area, the area, the physical area was reduced. So we had less area to fence in. So that is the corresponding reduction in the quantity of fencing.
Thank you. Let's see. I did see some information about some material changes, and I just wanted to double-check that we were not planning to bring in, do we have wood chips in this facility?
When you say wood chips, we're not talking about landscape bark mulch. We're talking about the engineered wood fiber safety surfacing. Yes, we do have that. It was a cost-cutting measure to replace with engineered wood fiber, to replace artificial turf, and some poured-in-place paving. Both artificial turf and poured-in-place safety paving is very expensive. Plus, it doesn't allow rain to percolate into the ground. So it was a trade-off decision for affordability reasons.
I see. Well, I appreciate that clarification. I think Councilmember Fernandez brought up, asked about elements that we are including for those who are differently able. And I do remember hearing comments that, that there was hope that we would maybe not end up where we are today with regard to that. And I guess I just hope that there will be enough in the broader offering to accommodate everyone. And as Councilmember Nash mentioned, we do have to go with the project that we can actually afford. So I appreciate the clarification. I did want to ask whether there might be an opportunity, if there was some consideration for a recognition or acknowledgement for the, the donation from the Parks and Rec Foundation, because I think when we read the admin report, we see a note that it's in we see, I note that it's included in the overall budget. But is there, is there something that it might, we could say that that particular money went to so that folks can feel, you know, if they made it a part of that donation, that they have something they can point to and say, yep, this is what we did to make it happen?
So, I, there's a robust communication plan about this project to the members of the community. And certainly, as a part of that, we will be listing all of the ways that this playground has been funded. And so, that is to be integrated into the communication and the signage out while the park is being built. But there are certainly opportunities, you know, for other things as the park gets built out. So, I don't think we're there yet, but there's definitely opportunities for that.
Thank you very much. Overall, I appreciate the vast amount of time and energy that's gone into making this project a reality. And there's a lot to be said for, I think it's been mentioned already tonight, but, you know, it's a perennial need to, you know, plan for our future, but then, of course, take next steps and make sure that a plan doesn't just sit on a shelf. We've come a long way, and many families in our city are waiting for an opportunity to experience what you've brought forward tonight. So, overall, I'm glad to see that the, you know, while I'm sorry to see that the two-to-five-year-old play area is reduced, I know last year it was one of the bid alternates, and there was talk of removing it completely potentially. So, I'm glad to see that that hasn't happened. And instead, we've come up with a plan that's under budget that still retains that important area and that we've been able to put in the safety that goes with it. As others mentioned, you know, I think the prefab restroom sounds like a prudent approach, a good way to ensure that we're delivering function while being budget-conscious. So, overall, I think we still have a very worthwhile project, and thank you very much.
First off, just want to thank you both again for a great presentation. I'm very excited to see this project moving forward. You know, it's, it is sometimes frustrating when you realize that this stuff takes so long. You know, I look at it in the perspective of my own kids, and it's like when this project started, they were seven and five. And by the time they're done, you know, one of them will be going way to college. So, you know, and that's not a diss anyway, or meant to be anyways. But, you know, definitely a frustration with the way this stuff works. I was wondering, because Deputy Mayor Lorraine mentioned the wood surfacing. So, is that like tan bark surfacing or what exactly is that? And what were, because I don't remember that. What were the concerns with using that versus, I would guess, we're talking about like a rubber or a synthetic surface?
The engineered wood fiber is a special wood product that, the way it's manufactured, knits together to create a firm surface that allows wheelchair-bound users of the play area to be part of the play activities.
Okay.
Tan bark for landscape is not.
Oh, yeah, okay. That's what I was worried. He was alluding to maybe, and I was just making sure I didn't have that right. So, it's still ADA accessible and safe?
Yes, it is, and we use engineered wood fibers in many of our current parks right now.
Well, and it sounds like, you know, for a lot of the trend, we've had a lot of young people come out and speak recently against synthetic turf. And so, in many ways, this might actually be advantageous in that sense. It's, you know, water can actually permeate it. It's not leaching plastic into the ground, which is probably a good thing. So, that's great. I guess the other comment I had more than anything else was, I was excited to see movement from, or to using a built, a prefabbed bathroom facility. And do you think that there are opportunities or will be future opportunities for that in other park projects? In the sense of it seems like that's far more affordable than revamping or trying to replace permanent, you know, onsite built structures?
So, I think it depends, and I would defer to Public Works on projects of those sorts because they handle the renovations of our restroom facilities. But certainly, you know, doing a prefab has costs associated, but it just depends on what you're doing. If it's minimal upgrades and maintenance, it's definitely different than a full replacement. But yes, definitely cheaper than the other option.
Well, very excited to see. And hopefully, we will get some lessons learned out of this in that, you know, now we're within budget and we're not giving up a lot. So, I think that that is, again, just, you know, hats off to everybody in Park and Rec and Public Works for working that through. I don't have any other comments or questions. Is anyone else before we? Okay, sure. Deputy Mayor, one more or one more?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to appreciate your question, following up on mine and getting a response from staff that I think clarified that I got the wrong takeaway from my initial question. And so, I'm glad to hear that this wood turf environment is indeed ADA accessible. And so, for those who are differently able, there shouldn't be issues. And thank you for helping clarify that.
Sure. Teamwork. Okay, so, we need a motion, and this is a long motion. So, maybe I will make it and then see if someone will second it. Of course, I'm all over the place. Where are we? Here we go. I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution accepting a $10,000 donation from the San Mateo City Parks and Recreation Foundation and authorize appropriation of the donation for the Central Park Playground Improvements Project in honor of Sheila Kansian's retirement. Additionally, I'd like to award a construction contract to Suarez and Munoz Construction, Inc. for the project in the amount of $8,485,784 with a contingency in the amount of $1,272,868 for the total amount of $9,758,652 and authorize the Park and Rec Recreation Director to execute the proposed contract, inclusive of all contract documents and substantially the form presented, and to approve change orders within the contingency reserve. So, I make said motion. Do I have a second?
I second.
All right. Can we get a roll call, please?
Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Motion carries four zero.
Thank you. Thank you again. Great presentation. Excited.
Thank you.
All right. We're now moving on to the next thing, and I am to pull up Proposition 2118 hearing script. This was mismarked. I believe this is item 11, right? Okay, yeah, it was mismarked as 10. Item 11 is a public hearing for the 2025 solid waste collection rates for the 2025 rate year. May we please have a staff presentation?
Hi, my name is Jack Johnson. I'm the Waste Management Supervisor for the City of San Mateo. We are also joined by Rick Simonsen, Senior Vice President for HF&amp;H Consultants, and Gabe Sasser, Project Manager for HF&amp;H Consultants, who are our solid waste rate-setting consultants. Tonight, we're here to conduct the 218 protest hearing. If a majority protest does not exist, we request that we approve the 2025 solid waste collection rates included in the Prop 218 notice, which is also available on the city's website, and to request council's approval of the appropriation of $400,000 to Recology to reduce the balancing account. This is our annual rate review process. Rates are reviewed by council each year and, once adopted, are effective for the next year. These rates will become effective on April the first. The city follows the California Constitution when setting solid waste rates, which means that all rates must be based on the actual cost of service. Currently, residential rates do not cover cost of service. There are approximately 20,809 residential accounts in San Mateo. Commercial rates do cover costs generally. There are approximately 2,674 commercial accounts in the city. Before we discuss the 2025 rates or the protest letters, I want to remind everyone about the solid waste process and what services the rates actually cover. On what most of us refer to as garbage day, three trucks visit every address on the route and pick up various sorted materials and take them to other locations for processing. For instance, the black bin, the garbage bin, is taken to the Shoreway Transfer Station, where it is taken on to Ox Mountain Landfill and Half Moon Bay. The blue bin, the recycling bin, is taken to the Shoreway Recycling Center, where recycling is sorted, baled, and then taken to various locations for further processing. The green bin, the organics bin, is taken to the Shoreway Transfer Station and then to either of two composting facilities, either in Tracy or Milpitas. It should be noted that, in addition to garbage collection, residential rates also include recycling and organics collection, transfer and processing, all for one charge. So, while there is no extra charge on your Recology bill for recycling and organics collection and processing, these services aren't free. They are all included in the garbage bill. Most of the work of the solid waste team is managing waste diversion, keeping things out of the landfill and recycling valuable resources such as paper, glass, metal, cardboard, and organics. These solid waste rates include all of the city's efforts to keep San Mateo clean and reduce waste, our anti-litter programs, the trash capture maintenance costs of preventing trash going into the bay, all of the street sweeping and the public outreach and education we do, our e-waste collection and shredding events, hazardous materials collection, construction and demolition recycling, and the legal dumping program. So, let's remember what we refer to as the solid waste rate or the garbage bill actually includes many more services. Some background. We have received a good bit of public comment during the protest hearing that the proposed rate increases are designed to punish those who produce the least amount of waste, are not competitively bid, and that our collection, processing, and diversion activities are too expensive or don't conform to what other countries do. As to those who produce the least waste being punished, the city has long been and remains committed to waste reduction. But regrettably, because of state laws, we are no longer able to fund our waste, recycling, and composting programs in the way we had been when using the pay-as-you-throw model. As to competitive rates, the city is in an exclusive franchise agreement with Recology that was competitively bid in 2019 and will be up for bid in 2035. As to how other countries collect waste, it is very complicated and there are many different options, but we employ state-of-the-art collection, processing, and diversion activities. As to expense, how did we get here? In 2006, in order to promote recycling and reduce waste going to the landfill, San Mateo, like many progressive communities, adopted a pay-as-you-throw system. But in the intervening years, California didn't meet its landfill reduction targets established by law. So, in 2016 and 2022, new regulations from the state came into effect mandating recycling and composting. Neither is voluntary for anyone in the state any longer. And because the California Constitution through Prop 218 requires states, I'm sorry, requires rates to be proportional to the cost of service to the parcel, we can no longer use the pay-as-you-throw model and must transition to a true cost-of-service model. And we have been adjusting rates per this requirement since 2021. I'm going to turn this over to Rick Simonsen and Gabe Sasser from HF&amp;H Consultants. They will walk you through the proposed 2025 rates.
Good evening. There are three components to the 2025 revenue requirement. First, there's the Recology collection costs, which are increasing 8% for 2025. Primarily, that's due to the increases allowed as part of the franchise agreement that the city has with Recology, as well as there are additional increases from the 2024 partial deferral of Recology collection cost increases. Second, there are disposal and processing costs that are increasing. And primarily, those increases are due as well to a deferral of 2024 cost increases that were a one-time deferral paid with rethink waste rate stabilization funds. And finally, the third component, city fees, which are used to fund the city's solid waste program, street sweeping, as well as some franchise fees. Let's move to the next slide, please. This slide summarizes the 2025 revenue requirement on row nine. Collectively, that makes up $33.4 million. And with revenue projections of $31.8 million, this results in a revenue shortfall of $1.58 million. Next slide, please. Fortunately, the city has in place a unique component of the franchise agreement, which is a balancing account. Recology maintains a balancing account payable to or from the city at the expiration of the franchise agreement in 2035. This is important in that it allows the city to not have to make up for that shortfall all at one time. Instead, it can leverage the balancing account and, over time, bring rates so that revenues equal the approved cost of service. However, the way that the balancing account functions is that when revenues collected by Recology are greater than the approved cost of service, that balancing account for the city increases. And conversely, when revenue is less than the approved cost of service, the balancing account decreases and interest is charged for that deficit. Currently, the city has a deficit in its balancing account. Next slide, please. As of 2024, the city was estimated to owe $1.2 million. But in the previous calendar year, 2024, at council's direction, the city remitted $1 million to Recology to reduce its balancing account deficit in this, in a $222,000 estimated deficit owed by the end of 2024. Again, this balancing account continues through the end of the franchise agreement, which is ending in 2035. So, with the $1.58 million shortfall projected in 2025, the city faces a cumulative shortfall of $1.8 million. And this is where rates come into play. Next slide, please. So, in order to address the $1.8 million revenue shortfall, there's two avenues: to increase revenues by addressing rates that do not meet the cost of service, as well as for the city to offset some of that burden to ratepayers by remitting $400,000 to Recology during the 2025 calendar year from the city's solid waste enterprise reserves. Next slide, please. These are the increases that were included for commercial solid waste and organic cart rate service. And these were included in the Proposition 218 notice issued to ratepayers. We'll note that no increase is proposed for commercial bins, those containers one cubic yard and larger, as those customers already meet their cost of service. Next slide, please. This slide is to illustrate the current predicament for residential solid waste rates. Those rates include a bundled service such that customers not only receive service for solid waste, but recycling and organics as well. So, the current rates are shown in one column, and the cost of service rate is shown in the column beside it, as well as a highlighted difference. And that difference has, over time, been reduced. And that's as part of the city's long-term plan to realign rates to the cost of service, which began in 2021, as evidenced by the graph at the. by the graph at the top of this slide. Let's move to the next slide. These are the proposed increases to residential rates to address that cost-of-service gap. The proposed rates would allow the city to use solid waste reserves to reduce increases to ratepayers while at the same time aligning rates closer to the cost of service to narrow that gap further. Residential subscriptions by subscription size are shown for reference. Next slide, please. These next four slides show a residential rate survey for each of the four residential container sizes offered, 20, 32, 64, and 96 gallon subscriptions. And on each of the four slides, we show a comparison of San Mateo's current rates and the rate that customers would pay if the proposed rates were implemented after tonight as of March 1st. Excuse me, April 1st. And on all four slides, you'll see that San Mateo rates continue currently, as well as under the proposed rate, to be less than half of all rates compared, and that in that comparison, this includes customers from neighboring jurisdictions, all jurisdictions that are a part of the same joint powers authority, and thus receive the same level of service from Recology that the City of San Mateo customers do. Next slide, please. So again, this is the 32-gallon rate survey. Next slide, please. The 64-gallon survey, and finally, the 96-gallon survey. Next slide, please. The city has available reserves to fund the remittance to, the proposed remittance to Recology, as it has $4.4 million as of the end of last fiscal year. And the city could use $400,000 in 2025 to reduce its historical balancing account, as well as use additional reserves in future years to reduce rate increases and mitigate that balancing account deficit. Next slide, please. So in summary, rates must cover the cost of solid waste services, and rates cannot be based on a diversion incentive or a pay-as-you-throw. The proposed 2025 rates move the city closer to compliance, and we know that additional increases are likely on the horizon with rethink waste capital improvements. That's the Joint Power Authority's consideration of further operational procedure improvements, as well as at the Shoreway Environmental Center, the contending regulations of zero-emission vehicle infrastructure, as well as single-use plastic, and further regulations having to do with Senate Bill 54. Next slide, please. These increases, the three tables shown on this slide for residential solid waste subscriptions, commercial solid waste cart sizes, as well as commercial organics cart sizes, were all included in the Proposition 218 notice sent to ratepayers and are for your consideration, for the council's consideration tonight. As part of this, the council would remit $400,000, I'm sorry, the City of San Mateo would remit $400,000 to Recology to reduce the balancing account deficit in calendar year 2025. Next slide, please. I'll turn it back over to Mr. Johnson.
So this is the rate adoption timeline and the steps we've taken to set these rates. On January the 13th, council approved the mailing of the public notice. The notice was mailed on January the 17th, and 45 days passed, and we are now here for the City Council Public Hearing on March the 3rd. And if effective, the rates will become, I'm sorry, if adopted, the rates will become effective April 1 and lasts for one year. So the request of council tonight is to conduct the 218 protest hearing. If a majority protest does not exist, approve the 2025 solid waste collection rates included in the Prop 218 notice and approve the appropriation of $400,000 to Recology to reduce the balancing account. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, Mr. Sasser, Mr. Swenson. At this time, I would like to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to comment on this item? Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker and will be received by the City Council for consideration, but only written protests will be tabulated towards a determination of whether there is a majority protest exists. Written protests may be submitted until the end of this public hearing, submitting to the city clerk. City clerk, do we have requests to speak or hands raised for public comment for this item?
Mayor Newsom, at this time, we have one request to speak in chambers. If you're participating remotely and wish to speak on this item, please raise your hand, and I will give you just a few moments to do so. So Mayor Newsom, that is one request to speak on this item, so we'll invite up Gary Germano to please come up for public comment.
Good evening, Mayor Newsom and City Council. My name is Gary Germano, and I have to chuckle at this. For the whole City of San Mateo, there's one person here speaking on the garbage rates. So I think, as I was reading this, about the 50-plus 1%, we aren't even close to anything. So, but in any case, I was looking this over, and we're happy with our garbage pickup service. They do a good job. And, you know, I was looking back to 2022, 2023, 2024, 2025. After 2022, they went up 20%. After 2023, they went up 21%. This year, they're going up 26%. It looks like we, this is like, I'm looking at it thinking, gee, this is kind of like almost a rubber stamp going up the line. Every time, it comes out more. And, and I'm thinking, well, amongst other things, I'm sure costs go up for everything. And I learned a little tonight about how far they have to take, I think it was the green waste, to get rid of it from the Shoreway Station. It's too bad there's not another place closer here like San Jose or something you could take it, because that takes a lot of time and money and gas. The only upside to the whole thing is I think, I honestly think that gasoline prices are going to go down, and you can use that very well against your deficit. But one other thing that's something I didn't know about, this balancing account with the $400,000 we have to put in to make up for the deficit that we already have so we don't pay more interest, what happens after this year? Where does the money get back? Do we get more money in the city to put in that account to do the same thing next year? That's a question I have for you. Otherwise, I think we're going to really run into the hole. And I guess I would say, it would be nice if there might be some ways to cut your costs down, because it just seems to be going up, 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 and up altogether. And from '22, we're up to 84%. That's everything each year going up, and probably a little more because I rounded down. So I think it's something to look at. I hope we can, but at least you don't have to take a lot of time tonight with a lot of speakers. So thanks very much, council, and thank you too for your presentation.
Thank you for coming out.
Mayor Newsom, that concludes public comment.
Okay. Are there any questions from the council? Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Thud the Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for your report. I just wanted to take this opportunity to highlight the question from our public commenter, Mr. Germond, about our city solid waste reserve fund, and perhaps you could just remind us how that fund might be replenished in the future.
The city's reserve fund is replenished through program savings and a healthy existing balance. There is 4.4 million available now to use over the next 10 years to modulate any proposed increases that are necessary in the balancing account.
So the fund might be replenished through, you said, program savings in the future? And we might find savings if, for example, in our service, is it fair to say that the savings could be found if our work, sort of like what we, what we know we need to collect, and the cost to provide that service were, you know, ended up being less than what is projected in our rates established by Recology and the tipping fees?
I have yet to see a decrease in the revenue requirement. The program savings I was referencing are, like, I don't spend the entirety of my budget every year, and that money becomes available. Any savings through the street sweeping program or the solid waste program becomes available for the use of rates.
So I'm happy to just jump in here just really quickly. When you look at comparable agencies, we have a really strong, healthy reserve. If you go to other agencies, it might be even less than $1 million. And so I think that just goes to speak to, you know, just the great, great work that city staff does from a financial standpoint to make sure that we're balancing these overall accounts. Now, when we look through the future, Deputy Mayor Lorraine, there's major costs on the horizon. It's not even just the trash carts for the trash service, but it's also the upgrades to the Shoreview facility, the transfer station, that we're looking at in the future. And so those costs, as much as we can preserve that reserve, will help stabilize those costs in the future so that we don't have to increase the rates insofar as even higher than what would be needed. If you saw in the, you saw in the presentation here, the actual cost for service for a residential three-barrel account is $57.57, and we need to, as Jack said, we need to close that gap. And the residents have to, we got to work towards meeting that goal. And so you see all the cities throughout, and it's great to see that San Mateo is on the bottom half of the overall charts. But we are making inroads in closing that gap and trying to preserve our reserves in the process so that we can take on the unexpected costs that are going to be coming up to us on the horizon. Correct me if I have any, if I missed anything on that.
No, and thank you for the assist.
Well, thank you very much for the work you've put in to bring us this presentation and frankly, to help us reach the goals of paying for our cost of service in a way that's measured and isn't fully borne by residents at this time, but is managed in this two-pronged approach you and HFNH and the city manager laid out.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. Where am I? City, that's it, okay, sorry. City clerk, were there additional public protests that have been received?
Mayor Newsom, there were no additional public protests received during this hearing.
Okay. Since we have determined that there are no more public protests coming in, I am now closing public hearing. City clerk, have you determined whether a majority protest exists?
Mayor Newsom, we have tallied all of the written protests to the proposed increase in the solid waste, recycling, and organic collection for the 2025 rate year. There were 31,720 notices mailed to property owners on the tax roll, and a majority would require one more than half that number, which would be 15,861. The number of valid protests received is 29 as of March 3, 2025. Based on that, it is clear that a majority of owners have not protested the fee increase, and the council is free to take action to increase or otherwise modify the fee.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Do I need to read the full motion?
You can just move the staff recommendation.
Okay, then I move for staff recommendation, and I call for a vote.
Second that motion. Mayor Newsom?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Lorraine?
Yes.
Councilmember Diaz Nash?
Yes.
And Councilmember Fernandez?
Yes.
Motion carries 4-0.
Thank you.
Moving on to our next item of new business, Boards and Commissions 2025: A Demography Study. We'll have a presentation by Chantal Eaton and Deputy City Clerk, and Martin McTaggart, City Clerk. The recommendation will be to adopt a resolution amending the--
apologies, Mayor Newsom, sorry to interrupt. The script has the incorrect resolution on there. We're just looking for feedback and direction from council on the survey.
Fantastic. Well, thank you, and I look forward to your presentation.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for having us today. As you mentioned, I'm Chantal Eaton, Deputy City Clerk, and I will be presenting today the City of San Mateo's Boards and Commissions 2025 Demographic Survey Results. We will walk you through the methodology, the data sources, the findings, and we will finish with feedback and questions from council and any public comment that we may have. We request today from council to provide feedback on the 2025 demography study results and to provide direction on the ongoing surveying and outreach that the City Clerk's office So the purpose for this study is to evaluate how our city's boards and commissions are currently reflecting in the advisory bodies in our city, and the City of San Mateo's population at large. This survey will be compared to a similar survey done in 2017 and in 2023. So similar to the 2017 survey and the 2023 survey, this study, it's utilizing the same format, and it will include data, data analysis that will be compared to the 2020 census and the 2021 American Community Survey. The survey was conducted via Survey Monkey, but we also made it accessible for whomever needed a printed version or over the phone manually filling out the survey. We received 46 out of 47 responses, so close to 100%. And we will be comparing to the results from 2017 and 2023. Therefore, we will be identifying and analyzing any data trends. So the survey, there's a survey evolution, and this beautiful diagram will show you that we started in 2017, and from feedback, we created the survey with the basics, duration of residency in the City of San Mateo, race, language, gender, education, age, housing, and overall income. Then in 2023, based on feedback from council, the focus was to include inclusive language and privacy. In addition, we added a new question on the age of the dependents for each of our members. And later on in this year, 2025-- And later on in this year, 2025, we expanded the response options per each of those questions, and we added the youth commissioners to our surveys. Now I'd like to hand it over to our City Clerk, Martin McTaggart, who will take us through the outreach and recruitment process.
Thank you, Chantal. Just to speak a little bit about our recruitment process in the Clerk's office, we conduct annual recruitment for vacancies, both for scheduled vacancies and unscheduled vacancies as needed. The traditional recruitment models has included announcing vacancies on our website, newsletters, social media, notifying individuals who have expressed interest throughout the year, things like keeping track of the applications that have been provided in prior years and prior recruitments, posting flyers at city facilities, engaging with the City Services Academy Leadership Program graduates, and encouraging current commissioners and council members to help spread the word. One thing that was different as part of this demographic survey is that we introduced the 2024 Outreach and Recruitment Success Plan, which is a new strategic plan, which was designed in February and March of last year and rolled out in April during our spring recruitment. And the goal was to enhance recruitment efforts, set clear priorities, new strategies, and a consistent messaging framework. I would invite the council tonight to consider the data within this survey to be more of an update for this larger objective or a work in progress, if you will. We're very excited about our Outreach and Recruitment Success Plan, but the work is by no means finished on this. We continue to develop. Excited to share some of those developments within this presentation. Generally, overall, the key objectives of the Outreach and Success Plan was to increase the number of applicants, so encouraging more candidates to apply for the vacancies, while also broadening the applicant pool, improving outreach to those underrepresented communities as we saw in prior survey results, and also enhancing community engagement. So just raising awareness about the role of advisory committees and advisory bodies, generally speaking. We looked at targeted outreach in this effort, so we developed partnerships with Q, community-based organizations, including NAACP branch, San Mateo, Tulama First Hongs, and various labor organizations, as well as neighborhood associations and places of worship. You'll also note, as Deputy City Clerk Eaton mentioned, we've expanded outreach through our educational materials being shared with student leadership programs at high schools in addition to the Generation Voter Youth Initiative. We also improved accessibility in our most recent recruitment. We worked towards addressing language barriers seen within the results by translating recruitment materials, providing those at community centers and public facilities, and worked towards ensuring broader representation. Next slide. Looking ahead, so this is just some insights that we have from applicant data. And it's a mixed bag, but overall, we're pleased with the number or the increase in applications we received in the 2024 spring recruitment. And this information will help us further refine our strategies as we move forward. Just in terms of applicant trends, so this graph on the slide here represents applicant data from 2021 to 2024. This most recent recruitment cycle saw significant applicant growth across multiple commissions. So you'll see there, our library board experienced 25% increase in applications. Community Relations Commission saw an 80% increase. Park and Recreation saw 250% surge, which is the highest number of applications that we've received for Park and Recreation. Similarly, Planning Commission doubled the number of applicants. Senior Advisory Commission witnessed a 133% increase. The one area that we did not see growth in was the Sustainability and Infrastructure Commission. We saw an actual decline for that one, so a 25% decline from the most recent recruitment. District representation, so just to speak a little bit about district representation. So obviously, we have five districts within the city of San Mateo. This chart here on the screen kind of just shows what we have in terms of representation of district by applicants. So for District 1, we had 27%. District 2 was 19%. District 3, 12%. District 4, 22%. And also 22% for District 5. And with that, I'll hand it back to Chantal Eaton for our survey results.
All righty, let's get into data. So from January through February this year, staff conducted the third demographics survey of individuals who serve in the city's appointed boards and commissions. As I mentioned before, a total of 46 out of 47 individuals serving on the advisory bodies participated in this survey. The city has five commissions, two boards, and two committees. So we will now move on into the findings of the 2025 survey. Our first question was the duration of residence in San Mateo. So you can see in the graph here, in blue, you will see the findings in 2025, and in red are the findings from the 2023 survey. From the previous survey done from 2017 to 2023, the average dropped from 20 years, being 20 years an average of residency in San Mateo, with only 70% living in San Mateo for over a decade. Now, if you see the blue trend, in 2025, the average actually increased. So from 2023 to 2025, there was an increase to 24.5 years as the average and with 77% residing in San Mateo for over a decade. Also, about 46% residing for over the average of 24.5 years. Moving on to our next question, which will give us the results for the age of San Mateo Boards and Commission members. This is similar to the 2017 and the 2023 findings, where our largest group is 65 and older as representation in our boards and commissions. For 2025, it's about 32.7% that represent the age of 65 and older. Here in this graph, you will see, for the green bar will represent the 2017 results, the red bar represents the 2023 results, blue represents 2025, and the purple represents the 2021 study with the census data. We use the 2021 and 2020 census data because it's the most complete data right now of the population in San Mateo or the Bay Area. So you can see in this graph with the red circle at the top, where we see that the vast majority, or the 32.7%, are 65 and older. But also, if you see from the bottom one, 55 plus 64, will give you a little bit more of an idea where more than 50% are part of that age group. There is also that similar trend where the 25 to 44 years or 44 years and younger are still underrepresented in our boards and commissions members, even though you can see there is a huge decrease or a big decrease in the results from the 2017, 2023 compared to 2025. This decrease represents a couple of individuals. Just to give you an idea, one person is equal to about 2%, a 2% mark in these bars. Moving on to the race and ethnicity. In our 2025 survey, it continues to show the trend of underrepresentation of people of color in our city boards and commissions that is consistent with the 2017 and 2023 findings. In this graph, the 2023 is the light blue. Should have used other colors. The 2017, it's the gray. And the population in San Mateo will be the one right in the middle. And then 2025 is dark blue. Out of the, not everyone responded every single question on the survey, but out of the ones that we received, 43 responses. We are still with the vast majority being identifying as white. And then following that is 14% identify as Asian, with 2% identifying as other. Now, moving on to housing and the living arrangements. We ask if they rent or own or other. For this survey, as I mentioned before, one of the changes from 2023 to 2025 was adding additional options as responses. That included the other. For those responses, about 4.4% identify as living in other conditions. Some of those, or the majority of those, were living with their parents. Renters remain underrepresented, as you can see in the bars above in the graph. We are comparing the results from 2025 to 2023 to the census data. As you can see, for the census data tells us that owner and renter are housing in the city of San Mateo is close to 50/50. So for still the majority being owner occupied housing, our boards and commissions are still, we can see the underrepresentation from the renters community with, for both comparisons, for both surveys, we can see over 80% being owner occupied and 10.8% for the 2025 are rent or live with the parents. So the next question is the average household income. This is before taxes, very important. And we here compare the results from 2025 to 2023. 2025 being the bars in blue, 2023, the bars in green. Of those who reported their average household income, that's 57%, are listing an income of $150,000 or higher, which is actually about the same as the median household for the San Mateo County, which is about $149,000. In addition, one of the, this was one of the questions where we also expanded the responses or the options for responses, which included a higher income. And for the purpose of comparison, we left it with just, here in the graph, you will only see the limit stopping at $200,000. But our survey resulted in 23.9% of our commissioners reported an income of over $300,000. All righty. Then moving on to languages other than English that are spoken at home. A smaller proportion of commissioners speak a language other than English at home compared to the general population. So in the 2025 survey, about 22.2% speak other, a language other than English. And according to the census data, about 17.8% of San Mateo residents speak Spanish at home. About 7.8% speak Indo-European languages. And about 16% speak Asian or Pacific Island languages. And within that, 1% speak other languages. Here is a list of the other languages that are our commissioners listed. And in our results, we see there has been a decrease on representation for people that speak other languages. As you can see in the graphs here, for the blue represents people that speak languages other than English, and the reddish orangey, it's people that speak only English. All righty, moving to the question that deals with dependents living at home. This is a question that was added for the 2023 survey. As you can see in the graph above, the vast majority do not have dependents living at home. But about 31% have dependents living in their home. This compares to 34% that resulted in the 2023 survey. So there's a slight decrease, but still is about 7% points higher than the number of households in San Mateo with dependents, according to the census. Now, the census only lists data that relate to dependents being children under 18. It does not keep track of other dependents such as seniors or people with disabilities or simply living at home. So that's something that our commissioners added to our survey, and this is why we need to expand on this question a little bit more. Moving on, we move on to the question of gender identity. Just to give you an idea, the census only tells us data with two genders, female and male. It does not allow data on non-binary. But we did open, in 2023, we added the option of non-binary. For our survey, we allowed a writing option for our commissioners to give us a little bit more on how to address this question. In 2025, the composition of board members and commissioners in the city of San Mateo shows a highly, a higher proportion of females, with about 56.8 identifying as females compared to 40.9 identifying as males. And because we opened the question, we now know that 2.3 identify as non-binary. This is actually very similar to the overall population in San Mateo, which is 52.5% females. So there is a higher female representation. There is a, there was a slight decrease in female representation from 2023 to 2025, but that gave the gender disparity between 2023 and 2025 actually narrowed. All righty. Moving on to the highest degree or level of school our commissioners have completed. I'm very happy to let you all know that our members are highly educated. About 66.7% have a postgraduate degree. That includes a master's or a PhD. There is a slight decrease of about 9% decrease from 2023. But because we open again, this is one of those questions that we open a little bit on the responses, we receive a higher or an increase of about the same for the bachelor's or associate's degree. Additionally, we included the youth commissioners for this survey. Again, this graph will show, just for reference, the blue is 2023, the pink, purple is 2025, and the orange, I'm gonna say, that's the census. All righty, so to summarize, there was a slight increase in the length of residency in the city of San Mateo for the average from 20 years to 24.5. Additionally, the representation of the 65-plus age range, there was a slight decrease from 2023. However-- However, we see an increase for the fifty-five plus age range. Still, the twenty-five to forty-four age range shows a decrease and is still underrepresented. For race ethnicity, it still continues to show a lack of representation from people of color. Housing, there is, there was a six point two decrease in renters from 2023 to 2025. And then moving on to the question from dependents living at home. There was a slight decrease of three percent in the number of commissioners reporting dependents. And same for language, the language proportion of the commissioners who speak language other than English at home decreased by about twenty point four percent from 2023. I remind you that's still lower than the general public in the city of San Mateo. And finally, for the income, the higher income categories that we added are consistent with the most represented and still holding over fifty percent of the boards and commissioners that serve today.
All righty, thank you, Chantal. We'll turn our focus now to districts in terms of composition of boards and commission members. During our last survey, the city council directed staff to include information as it relates to district representation on our boards and commissions. So we'll move on to the next slide to show you some changes between 2023 and 2025. As you can see, District One still overrepresented. We have thirty-eight percent of commissioners as of 2025 residing in District One, whereas the underrepresentation of District Two has slightly increased. Districts Three have seen minimal changes, a slight two percent increase. District Four has represented a significant increase, just under a ten percent increase, whereas District Five has also experienced a marginal increase. And just looking forward and taking the survey data that's been presented tonight, just a couple of things I would like the council to just keep, keep at the front of your minds as it relates to 2025 outreach strategies. So we're going to continue to use the data in this iterative process to make sure we're, we're making progress towards full representation. Just to share with you, we're going to expand our bilingual materials. We're going to include additional languages. One additional recruitment option we're going to be moving forward with or we've begun moving forward with is a spotlight on commissioners. So we're doing video interviews with current serving commissioners, and that'll be part of a video campaign on our city's social media website. We'll also have that represented within the city's e-news as well as the physical newsletter. Just a couple of things to note regarding the spring 2025 recruitment. So one of the things that was changed last year was the council directed staff to reduce the eligibility list period from twelve months to six months with the goal of increasing opportunities for additional applicants in the future. We do have ten commissioners this year who will be reaching the end of their term and seeking reappointment if they are interested in doing so. Brief note, just about council rules and procedures for, for that process. They do provide that an automatic reappointment is a possibility. However, the option exists also that council could direct staff to require all commissioners to reapply and re-interview for an additional term. Recent trends in, in most recent years has been an automatic, automatic process, but the council is free to provide staff with different direction on that. Wanted to just do another quick update regarding the civics arts committee. This was discussed during our boards and commissions review last year that there were no, there are currently no term limits as part of our civic arts committee. And that's something that staff has received direction to look into and bring back. So it won't be included within this spring recruitment, but it is something that we do plan to have in future recruitment. So we'll be bringing back that in the form of an ordinance introduction. And we'll just close out there. We'll open it up for the council to provide feedback on the demography study results as well as provide direction on our ongoing surveys and outreach.
Thank you very much for a great presentation. Do we have any public comment before we open it up to the council?
Anybody on line? No requests to speak in chambers and no hands raised.
No, right, all right. Then we will close public comment and open it up for questions and comments from the council. Who wants to go first? Nicole, I saw you go first. All right, thanks.
Okay, sorry, I got some questions. Thank you both for a very comprehensive overview of our commissionerships. They, commissioners provide a very important advisory capacity to the council. So I am grateful for every person who puts their name forward to serve. And when I started as a commissioner back in like the early 2010s, we had no sort of engagement on this. So I was actually part of the first commissioner data survey, and I love to see how far it's come. I feel like we know more of our city now, so thank you for that. So a couple of questions. I am a little concerned about the turnout for commissioners in my district. The fact that we were tiny before and then we went down three percent between 2023 and 2025. So some questions for either the city, the city clerks or staff. Is there anything that could be done specifically towards the equity priority areas to increase outreach or increase the budget for outreach in those communities, two and four? I do notice that four did get a little bit of a bump, but two still super small. Is there anything that can be done to increase sort of the resources or the engagement that could be done in, in my district?
So I think that for further discussion, we can take that back and, and suggestion back to staff. And we, we can look at figuring out if it's the funding issue specifically. But I also think that in order to cast a wide net, and it's in just an ever-changing, evolving communication.
Sure.
Kind of an outreach.
Yeah.
How, how we do that specifically, I know that referred, and I'm not going to get out ahead for our city clerk, but a lot of streaming happens now. People don't do the old way of, you know, kind of just the tried and true of getting things out. You know, just, just being able to have, you know, flyers are great. Yes, we want to do that and have that. But I think there's also other platforms and avenues that we can get word out. And so one of the things that I want to, you know, investigate further, actually, to get in front of more people is the streaming services, whether you're on Spotify, whether you're on Netflix, you know, just different ways of trying to get to a different audience and a different demographic too, that might not be normally utilizing all those services. And so there are firms that actually have multi-pronged approaches of being able to advertise. And so there's new ways, instead of just doing radio or the flyers or anything like that, really thinking outside the box. And so, and we can pinpoint, so that's another thing with the streaming services. You can geofence and locate where you want to spend that money. And, you know, you could do that with social media as well. But there's ways of being able to do that and being more surgical overall to get the word out. And that's something that we can investigate further. It does take a little bit more money, but it's something that we can look at. But it's also another thing that I've always seen that really can help and be beneficial. People will not listen, you know, kind of like if it's staff saying, hey, come on out to this meeting. They're not going to come out to staff. It's going to be a friend of a friend who's going to invite them or get them in to the fold of wanting to engage with the city. And so being more deliberate and identifying the different stakeholders that can stitch the community fabric and getting the word out can go a long way as well. And so I don't want to get out in front ahead of my city clerk's team because I'm making them hustle a little bit on this. But there are different out of the box ways of going out and being able to engage further. And one area is actually, we've been doing San Mateo conversations. There's a whole group of individuals who we've engaged over this last year. And we have all their contact information as well where we can invite them. It's really difficult though, in a lot of these equity priority neighborhoods, to really get people to want to engage or take the extra time because a lot of people are just very busy, working or raising kids or working multiple jobs. I've seen that in just, I've worked in three different San Mateo County communities and specifically in the minority communities, it's a hustle specifically. But, you know, working out and trying to get people into the fold and getting new voices in there. It's something that actually the San Mateo conversations was because of this 2023. Right when I got here, we had this report. And so really it was wanting to engage with the minority communities and getting to know them of this last year. So Martin, is there anything else to add?
Sure, no, those are great points. And one, one thing that I would just add that I'm, I'm encouraged by the applicant data that we saw. It looks like District Two and District Four residents are starting to become more interested in these positions. And from what it appears, you know, while, as was mentioned earlier, we're not seeing the results really reflected in, in the survey currently, but it might be something in future surveys, we'll start to see those start to even out a little bit more. I do know just anecdotally that a lot of commissioners will apply for a commission for the first time or applicants will apply for the first time and then fall short of getting appointed. But maybe they get on an eligibility list or maybe they, you know, start to see, oh, you know, this is an opportunity for me to engage in my community. So a lot of commissioners will say, you know, I was unsuccessful the first time, but then I applied again and I got appointed the second time. So I think that with the pool of information that we have from this most recent data and also some of the communication strategies within our boards and commissions outreach success plan and some of the strategies that City Manager Kujikian has mentioned, I think I have optimism that we'll, we'll see these results change in the future.
Okay, great. Another question that I had, thank you for that, thank you both for that. I am, I would like, I don't know what the motion or the action is, but I would like for us to take up the alternative of having all of the, all those commissioners who are up for appointment, reapply and re-interview.
So not having an automatic reappointment?
Not having an automatic reappointment.
How it currently is the policy?
We're a new council and I really feel like we should have input on those folks.
So Martin, do we just need to get direction of nodding heads this evening in order to make that change? There's nothing outside of, you know, have to make an official?
Rules and procedures already allow for that. The flexibility has been baked in that if commissioners are considered to be high performing, that that process could be waived, and that's kind of become more so the default. But our rules and procedures do provide that for commissioners who are eligible for service again, that they would reapply. So tonight, if, if there was a majority direction from council, we could move forward on that basis.
How do we feel about the?
I agree.
Two? Four?
Great, four out of four.
Four out of four.
We have direction.
With one exception.
Thank you. Is it possible for us to get sexual identity or sexual orientation data from our commissioners? I know it's a makes for an awkward question if you're sort of like saying something, if you're verbally helping them potentially, but I do think that that's important.
It did, this was a suggestion that came up through the city's diversity, equity and inclusion task force had provided that suggestion. And staff's response to that was that we didn't have any comparable data to, to use as it relates to sexual orientation of commissioners.
Do we need comparable data? Just, can't we just start gathering it now? If people identify as LGBTQ, I feel like we should know that.
If, again, if the council directs us to do so, we could include that as a question for future surveys.
Okay, you have nodding, cool, awesome, thank you. A majority of the, sorry, so another point. A majority of the council now is between twenty-five and forty-four. And I feel like that is disconnect because we now have an underrepresentation of people forty-four and under. And so would that sort of be, it's not, I'm not speaking to, happy, I know you just had a birthday. But a majority of the council is between twenty-one, is under, is under forty-four. Would that sort of that like new, the, you know, the, the geo fencing, like Spotify ads and stuff, would that kind of fall into that same outreach?
Exactly. It will exactly skew towards the younger generation right now.
And then do we have any outreach, because a lot of our, I mean, it's as, as it happens, the people under forty-four don't have kids right now. But do we have partnerships with the school district to try and get those young parents to apply as well?
I'll defer to Martin on that one.
So this is where we saw the most growth in our youth commissioner vacancies. And it wasn't mentioned in the presentation, but one of the things that we will be doing as part of this spring recruitment is recruiting for youth commissioners for our sustainability infrastructure commission, the library board, as well as the senior advisory commission. So as part of our last recruitment for youth commissioners, we made a proactive outreach to all of the high schools. And that is targeted specifically towards the youth commissioner recruitment. But if there's interest in spreading more information about just other opportunities for service, including the non-youth commissioner positions, we can include that.
For sure, like how do we get a Martin McTaggart to apply? You have a five-year-old, right? Like, how do we get an Alex Kajikian to apply, like with young kids, like?
So the way it works is the school district has Peachjar, which is basically the software that goes on the platform that gets to every parent and their distribution. We can ask them to share our information, something we can look at. Additionally, a nice, another place where you can really get active participation and people who want to step up and lead. No, no, I'm talking about the PTAs actually. It's just another, it's already kind of built in and there's a number of PTAs at every school. And so being able to send a letter to each individual PTA or an email calling for applicants to serve their community, that's also another great place to be able to recruit the demographic that you're looking for, council member for this.
Thank you, City Manager Kajikian. Sorry, I have to be council member Swako Kudiki when she's not here, so no other question. What is the outreach budget for commissioner recruitment? Do we have a budget?
We do, it, it's not extensive. We, we cover our, part of the, our budget covers to date. We've looked at flyers, leaflets, things that are not a huge dollar value. So I would guess it's within the region of five thousand dollars is what we've spent.
Printing costs and online ads or whatever, cool. And then just for my own curiosity, what's the rationale for asking whether dependents are living at home? Is it just to see if they have kids or parents?
So again, I think this came back to the diversity, equity and inclusion task force. The interest was potential barriers to service. So a lot of our advisory bodies have evening, evening meetings, and that could be considered something that may not be fully accessible to them to participate in.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm so excited about this. I mean, you have done so much great work in terms of the outreach. And just looking at the numbers, I know personally how much more time I'm spending interviewing commissioners. So that is a very physical manifestation of good work. So yes, we've got farther to go and there are so many more things we want to do. But just take a moment to celebrate. I mean, this is really good work. And I also celebrate the amount of data that you're collecting because you only know how good or where you have to go by collecting the data. So, so, so important. Just in general, anything we can do throughout, City Manager mentioned it, referrals, 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 referrals. You all know, it's people who say, oh, I'm doing this, you might be interested in doing this. Or, you know, going to places where you never ask people to come where you are. You always go where they are. That's number one, you know. So I know you've been talking to faith-based groups and PTAs and things. What other groups, what microgroups? You know, San Mateo Moms, one of the huge Facebook group. We should be all over that. I am an older member of that group. There are lots of younger members of that group. But just that kind of viral and get people who are, who are really the, the spreaders, you know, and ask them where to go. So you're doing all that, just keep doing more and more of it. I love the fact that you're going to be doing spotlights on commissioners' videos. The more you can do in video, that gets to the streaming. But just getting out and showing people, you know, an hour in the life of a commissioner, hey, this is sort of cool, look what I'm doing, here's where I'm going, here's. And, and what's the impact that they can make? Because it's really also, it is a uphill slog to try and convince people to even think. Like, oh yeah, I'm interested in doing this, but I've got dinner, I've got homework, I've got my own career, I've got my family, I've got an old parent I've got to take care of. So we can't, you know, kill ourselves for not making all the progress in eighteen months. It's really fundamentally, unless we commit to changing the compensation for boards and commissions, we are not going to get the real substantial. You want people from District Two? I mean, they've got it right now by, you know, in, increasing the city council compensation. We now can probably pay for childcare for people to come and be part of city council. we now can probably pay for childcare for people to come and be part of city council. But that's not, that's not talking about boards and commissions, that's not talking about basic replacing. So I don't think we can discuss that right now, but that's, we've got to keep it in that mind frame, what can we do? Or is there any other kind of incentive? Or are there grants that we can apply to? Is there any way? Because, you know, that's just a reality. But I think it's an important reality to continue to deal with. I agree, the commissioners should reapply, we have to reapply, everybody should have to reapply. And those are my major comments. Congratulations and keep at it. And any way we can help, if we can go someplace, talk to people, you know, most of us started out on commissions in some way, shape, or form, if that's ever helpful.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you to the mayor, thank you, Assistant City Clerk for your presentation tonight. I echo the praise for the progress in gathering data and the results in more applications. And I guess my question is, we are now gathering data on our commissioners on a regular basis, but what do we know about our applicants? And what could we learn?
Yeah, that's a great question. We, through our application process this past year, we introduced, to supplement the commissioner demographic data, we introduced a demographic survey for our commissioners. So that was linked to the application. So we do have some data, but unfortunately, it's not very comprehensive. I want to say, mention Chantal can correct me if I'm wrong, it looks like maybe one in three completed the demographic survey associated with it. So I think we do have some data from what has been completed, and just a rough analysis of the applicant data seems to indicate that the trends match what the survey results are. So we have an underrepresentation of people of color, people who speak multiple languages, and income, but I think that we can promote the demography questionnaire as it relates to the applications a little bit better, so we can get more comprehensive data. And that's something that we can include in future studies.
Thank you, I think that would be helpful, because, you know, I do feel like we can see some, some progress in outreach from, from your department. And, you know, to, I think some of the recommendations would be best informed by a sense of like where we might be missing, because I think the, the trends in sitting board and commission members may take some time to significantly shift. But, but understanding kind of like the results of our outreach, I think to the City Manager's point, if we're, if we have opportunities to engage in some more technology-driven advertisement, we, that in there may be an opportunity to gather a little data as well. So I'm certainly supportive of gathering what data we can from our applicants to best inform our next steps. I think I remember bringing up the last time, the Thrive Alliance apparently has access to some volunteer translators. I guess I feel like this is where I'm having a little tension, because I'm wary of recommending specific next steps, especially with a limited budget, when, you know, I'm not sure whether the data would suggest that's like, you know, the direction in which we need to go. But I guess I do, of course, see the, the, the sort of Latinx result as being too underrepresented, you know, certainly on our sitting boards and commissioners. And so I guess, you know, to Councilmember Diaz Nash's comments on considering incentives, to me, I mean, I think when we, when we talk about what languages are spoken at home, and yet, I mean, at City Hall, I think only English is spoken, except in a very rare occurrence. And I guess I wonder if you have thoughts on whether we might be able to pilot something and whether you think it would help?
Do you mean in terms of the conduct of public meetings or the recruitment strategies adopted for applications? Just, if it's relation to conduct of public meetings is reviewing our processes, I do know that the Community Relations Commission actually in recent meetings had live interpreter services introduced. So we had interpreters in the room who were providing services to members of the public who were contributing perhaps for the first time at meetings, and that was a new avenue for introducing language access as it relates to commissions. So I don't know if that kind of maybe speaks a little bit to what you're referring to.
Well, I think it does tangentially, and I'll admit, you know, I think I'm just, I might be just trying to brainstorm a little bit here. But, I mean, I think it would be, it would be good to explore, you know, as, you know, what, what services might be possible for somebody who may wish to contribute as a board member or commissioner, but may not feel 100% comfortable speaking English all the time? To me, I think that that seems to be what we're trying to get at with these questions. And, and so I guess I can leave it there, unless the City Manager has it.
So actually, I've had to approach this when I was in Hafn Bay, and it's very expensive to be able to do this type of service. I think at the time, and I'm, don't quote me, this is back in like 2015 or 2016, we went ahead and budgeted about $150,000, and that was for all the meetings that were going on. So it is very, it can cost money to do this type of service. We can, I think a citywide translation policy, it's something that we are looking at doing in the future. I think that would be the time to really talk about where we want to approach, what we want to translate, or for what meetings and how we would want to approach that. I think that's a perfect opportunity to have this discussion about, about just our translation services overall for the city. I hope that kind of answers your question.
Yeah, I think that's fine. I appreciate that, and so thank you for that. And I think I'll just wrap up by noting that, you know, I appreciate the work today, I feel like we're making progress, I look forward to more progress. I think we'll see in annual drives with some of the small changes that we're making, and, you know, perhaps the word small isn't totally appropriate, but I feel like you've brought forth a number of changes that I think will in, result in more people applying. And on an annual basis, we'll begin to see some shifts. I love the idea of streaming ads, just because I, when it was mentioned, I thought about how I do go on YouTube from time to time, and I saw the ad for commute.org of all things, you know, approximately 500,000 times. It was remarkable just how many impressions were, yeah. So, you know, that's an approximation, of course, but, but to me, I think it illustrated the potential impact of, you know, a not-for-profit agency, you know, reaching people. So I look forward to learning more about what fruit might be born there. And of course, if, as we're getting more youth commissioners with youth commissioner opportunities, I can't help but notice that it's probably going to help many of the numbers that were presented today. I do want to be a little careful, because I guess it seems to me that I wouldn't want us to lose, I think, some of the opportunities that Councilmember Fernandez mentioned in getting, you know, young adults who are going to be like voting board members and commissioners, and who might be, have different, have a different pathway from joining. But, but I do think we, I look forward to more youth commissioners and seeing what they can bring to this mix. Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Just a quick comment, if you need the third nodding head in order to research compensation, I am the third nodding head, because I think these two are doing it. But I think, I know that's a different topic. And the other thing is, if we're thinking out of the box for potential, I know Persona has some thoughts, could we potentially give commissioners, could we like incentivize commissioners to have like a free parking spot in downtown? For like, you know, I think, I know people would apply just to get a parking spot in downtown.
So it's so interesting that you asked this, Councilmember Fernandez, because in a previous city that I worked for, the same kind of question was asked, and then it goes right back to legal about whether or not the gift of, I'll let you take it from there.
Even before we get to that point, I mean, so I want to just remind the council, under the city charter, members of boards and commissions cannot receive compensation. They can, so it would require a charter amendment submitted to the voters. The charter does allow for certain reimbursement of expenses to a limited degree, but compensation is currently not allowed.
Just out of curiosity, would that extend, that wouldn't extend however to like childcare? If we were able to provide childcare, that wouldn't be considered a perk, right?
Well, this actually came up during the several study sessions we had about charter amendments last year. And, you know, payment for expenses that are necessary in order to attend a meeting, you know, that would qualify under the charter. And so it could potentially cover something like childcare, that was mentioned, I mentioned that before at our prior meeting, so there's some potential there, and I'll leave it at that.
Interesting, okay. Thank you. Great presentation. I feel like, for the most part, we're trending the right way. There are some things that are concerning. For example, am I understanding it right that we went from having one Hispanic or Latino board member to none? Yeah, that's bad, we have to fix that. The other thing I noticed was, with the other housing, currently, how many youth commissioners do we have that were surveyed for this?
There's one, one that was surveyed. So we had one commissioner stepped on, one youth commissioner stepped on before we were able to conduct the survey, so currently there's one serving.
Okay, so the other housing, one could be the youth commissioner and the other could be someone else. Likewise, there was only one that showed less than high school, so that would be them, got it? I think we already talked about this, but I would also be for, we already talked about this, for expiring and reappointment, I think we'd like them to come ahead before us. I would also like to make sure that with the Civic Arks Committee, that we do look at some sort of a term and a process for re-upping it. I think that's a committee that a lot of people would like to participate in, and so we need to revolve people out. I'm in support of outreach, particularly social media. I don't know if there are ways, in addition to pop-up ads, that, are there influencer-type people that, you know, can promote? I don't know if there is, but that's definitely following and figuring out the trend. Another thought I had, and Deputy Mayor commented on this a little, is with applicants, we, two things, one, I've interviewed a lot of applicants the last two years, and I feel good about the fact that we're having to interview more, because we have more people interested. But, you know, one frustration that I see is, I would, I would hedge it to be more than seven out of 10 come to apply for a commission without ever having gone to a meeting. And then sadly, they don't all get to become the commissioner or board member, and then they never go to a board or commission meeting again for the one that they applied for. And, you know, to me, I think we have to figure out the way to get them involved. And, you know, I don't know that we can require them, but I think we should heavily persuade them to try to attend a meeting that they're applying for. And then likewise, we should try to make sure that, hey, you know, I'm sorry you didn't make it on the Park and Recs Commission, but you know, we still need people to participate in these meetings, like we, we need butts in seats, we need, we still need your ideas. And so just because you didn't become a board member or commissioner, doesn't mean that I don't want you coming to the next five Park and Recs meetings. We, we need to get people in, and if we can get them to those meetings, I feel like that's going to put them over the hump of, okay, now they're really, you know, they're going to be the one who gets it the next time. And so I don't know what, what that solution is, but that's my feedback with that is, is to try to engage the applicants we have and keep them engaged even if they don't get the position.
Maybe just briefly comment on that, Mayor.
Absolutely.
So one of the things that we do, once the appointment subcommittee have selected the candidates that are moving forward for appointment, for appointment recommendation for the full city council, this past recruitment, we reached out to all of the applicants following their, you know, unfortunate news that they were not moving forward, but we did invite them to remain involved in the process. So that included things like directing them towards our, our email subscriber lists for things like meeting agendas and getting them subscribed to our e-news. So that's something that we can continue to do and continue to develop for this current spring recruitment, to make sure that they're all aware that there's other ways to get involved and, you know, not to be completely turned away from applying again.
I guess I certainly didn't mean to imply that we haven't been doing a better job, we definitely are, I just, that next step is getting them to a meeting, you know, and getting them to come to a Park and Rec meeting, get them to come to a, yes, Chantal.
So I just wanted to add, for the applicants during 2024, that data actually agrees with your conclusion, about 72% of the commissioners that applied have never attended a meeting before, but about a little bit over 86% of the applicants actually heard about the position from the emails that we sent. So they are subscribed to our email list, and about, like I said, over 80% of those applicants heard about it. About 10% heard it from you guys. So a couple of them actually mentioned, a couple of past and current council members that mentioned this to them during events or anything like that, so 10% is a big chunk.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess that would be the, I'll kind of end on that, but that's great feedback. And so when we know, or maybe we want to do it more coordinated, and like, what are the seats that are opening in the next three months? And then we, as a council, can also support the promotion of that just from within our own networks. But it might be something that we look at, rather than doing it one-off, like, okay, this one's got, is kind of looking at it from a lens of, these are going to be open in the next 90 days, let's recruit for all of them together, and then do it each quarter. So, great, great.
And then also, all the people who come for public comment, that's how people get involved in government, right? They're really excited about something, or they really can't stand something. So they come and they're going to say something here, what can we do to make them aware? You're complaining about, you know, bus depots? Okay, maybe you want to be part of the Sustainability Infrastructure Commission. You're excited about this, maybe this is an option for you. I don't know how that, there's somebody waiting at the door giving out flyers, I don't know what, but I think, or we just keep talking about it. But this, when they come here, this is a prime opportunity to recruit.
I mean, it could be something as simple as having a checkbox on the public speaker slip, like, would you like more information about these topics? Or would you like, you know, to be here about, to join our email? Maybe that's part of that process, and have them put their email and check in right, right on the spot. Is there a problem with that? Okay, just making sure.
I think that's a great suggestion, so we'll look at adding that box on our public comment cards for all of them.
Persona was like, wait.
Or also just when there is an opening, that absolutely needs to be part of, not even reports and announcements upfront somehow? Because if you have, wait till the reports and announcements, everybody's asleep.
I think we can probably add it to the script, Martin, when we get into the recruitment season, just right before we do public comment for the mayor to just announce that call for applicants.
Okay. Yes, please. Pardon me, sorry. We're on a roll.
I do just want to-
I do just want to check City Clerk about that question for our applicants. Is it something that we could require? I feel like I remember last time there was a bit of tension there potentially on requiring our applicants to submit the sort of demographic data that we were surveying our our board members and commissioners for.
Yeah, I don't know that we we can make it mandatory for commissioners to complete the demography study. I think we can make it strongly encouraged. But I think we reviewed this after our last discussion and it was determined that it can't be a requirement for appointment, for example.
I see. Yeah. And that that's fine. I guess maybe I'll just give a comment for your for your consideration that 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 maybe we could include some bit of language in the application itself that indicates like the importance of it. Perhaps it's already there, and I apologize if it is. But something to the effect of, you know, this is this is optional and not, you know, required to be appointed, but please understand, you know, the city's working on gathering information to make sure we're, you know, getting representatives from that reflect our city's makeup, and we would really appreciate your your input. That's all. Thank you, Mayor.
No problem. All right. Do you have all you need?
Yes, we do.
Great. Thank you for a great presentation. Okay, moving on to reports and announcements. Does anyone have any reports and announcements? All right, take it away.
Just very quickly, this past week, I went into the San Francisco Foundation, and they invited the Urban Land Institute in to give basically an all day training to local electeds about planning. And we all became, as you can imagine, we're on a developer team. I was the marketing director, can you believe it? But somebody else was the financial advisor, someone else was the neighborhood advocate, and someone else was the equity advocate. And we were given, you know, just a case study and a model that they they shared with us, which was really great. And we had to work through it and go through all the real world trade offs of, you know, you want to you want to do this, it's going to cost you that. And it's anyhow, I will not take the time. But I think this would be wonderful to incorporate in training, any way, shape or form. I don't know how. I offer it up to the sky. I know they're going to be doing it some more. And I was very disappointed that there were 30 local electeds that responded, and only eight of us showed up the morning of, which was really disappointing. So and they they spent a fair chunk of change, I think, to make it happen. But I would really, an Urban Land Institute would love to work with people. So that's my announcement.
Thank you, Lisa. Nicole? Nothing. Deputy Mayor.
Sure, thank you. I'll do my best to keep it brief, but I did want to first just ask everybody to please vote. Tomorrow is Election Day, so you still have an opportunity. You can come by City Hall and other locations. So please check, I want to say it's SMC acre, right? SMC SMCvote.org, right? Huzzah. Okay, so check that if you if you have questions or you can come here. Additionally, Electrify San Mateo has a community feedback meeting tomorrow.
March.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Somehow still Monday, so please come on Wednesday.
We can just hurry up.
Yeah, yeah. This is going to be at the at our San Mateo Public Maintenance Library in the Oak Room. Well, this is important. And it's at 7:00 PM. So 7:00 to 8:00, if you can join us. There's also a Zoom function, a separate meeting available on Zoom, which is helpful because I know it's on top of making it, you know, it being hard to make any particular event on any particular day in person. Some of us for for some of us, that's a constant challenge. And and so I actually really appreciate and just want to shout out staff who made that possible to have this attended in person at the library or on Zoom for those who could join remotely. So that one, again, is on Thursday, March 13th, and we have information on our city website. Also, just quickly note that I attended Rethink Waste Board and Peninsula Queen Energy Board this in February on behalf of our city. For Rethink Waste, I just wanted to give a quick shout out to our Solid Waste Manager, Jack Johnson, who presented with us earlier was became the Chair of the Technical Advisory Committee Board for Rethink Waste, which is very important. And I always appreciate his advice and guidance as we look on to future board meetings. And in Peninsula Queen Energy, just a note that the board agreed to add $7 million into an existing $23 million contract related to GOV PV, of which we are a participant through the Beresford Carport Project. This 7 million is for battery storage. So we've initially had phases to get local governments to look at their facilities and see whether they could apply for an at cost solar project. Now, some of these projects are going to get the opportunity to add battery storage. And that's really important because, you know, not only are we getting an opportunity to potentially save and control energy costs at our local facilities, but with battery storage, we have the opportunity to save even more because we can store some of excess solar when we when the sun is out and then use it when it would otherwise be expensive to get energy from our energy provider. But it increases our resiliency, too. So if the power goes out, we have an opportunity to have the power remain at some of our public facilities. And thank you. Those are my reports and announcements.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Okay, just a couple more to round it out. There always are events in downtown. We did secure a contract with Head West, and they will be coming now on a monthly basis. Their next day will be Sunday, the 16th of March, 11 to 5 on B Street. So come on out and enjoy. It's a lot of fun. I've heard great feedback and I've gone myself, so. State of the City. So one week from today is the State of the City. I feel like I'm talking to a huge room of people. Hopefully, people are watching this on video. But but I'll be hosting the State of the City at San Mateo Main Library one week from tonight. Doors will open at 6:30. There will be food available, heavy snacks and apps, I think they're calling it. But their seating can be limited, so if you intend to come, please make sure you go online and sign up. If you do not sign up for a seat, you're still welcome to attend, but the seats will be given first priority to people who signed up. The event will start at 7:00 PM. Looking forward to it, and please encourage people to come. Sorry. The last thing would be that our next meeting happens to fall on an unobserved holiday of St. Patrick's Day. So even though I can't require the council to wear green, I encourage everyone to wear some green at the next city council meeting. Anything else? That could be really dangerous. All right, then, before we adjourn, let's take a moment of silence to remember Keith Weber, our quarterly mayor's hero. Thank you.